Am you? It's on me, this is.
What am you playing?
Where's that? Where's your audio source? Do you see it levels?
... prior to the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter not on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or recording secretary prior to the point in the meeting for open forum on non-agenda items. Public comment cards are available at the information table at the rear sort of midsection of the room. From the recording secretary or online. We ask that all speakers come to the podium to address the board. Thank you. Okay, um, this evening I'm going to ask Mr. Adams to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all.
Do I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The agenda passes. Okay, open forum on non-agenda items. I understand we have two speakers this evening. At this time, I'd like to call on Rochelle Hightower, please.
I tried to file whistleblower complaint under AP and BP 7700, which would go directly to you, Madam President, because I named Dr. Zellet. And because of that, they thought they needed to screen what I said because elected officials couldn't determine for themselves if they should be able to hear the whistleblower complaint. In other words, eliminating what whistleblower complaints are for in the first place. In closing today, I'm asking, and I filed a complaint, and CC, and all of you board members as well, detailing some of the things and asking for an interview with you to hear the whistleblower complaint. And I've received no response, not one from anyone. In closing, I want to leave this in your hearing. I'm not interested in picking up the crumbs of compassion thrown from the table of someone who considers himself my master. I want the full menu of rights, Desmond Tutu. Justice will not be served until those who are unaffected or outraged is those who are. And if you're neutral in sides of injustice, you've sided with oppressor. Justice is what love looks like in public. And without justice, there can be no love. We are all implicated when we're allowed, when we allow other people to be mistreated. And an absence of compassion can corrupt the decency of a community, state, and a nation. Thank you.
Hello, thank you. Um, I'll be brief. Talk about a, a great case study for how a board shouldn't behave. Your legacy is to be on the wrong side of history. This isn't a one-time mistake. This is a continued mistake. And we see this happening time and time again. There's so much data out there that shows that for women of color in administrative, in administrative positions on, on community college campuses, that they're gaslit, they're denied representation, they have health problems stemming from work, they're harassed. Is any of this ringing a bell? It's great to know that Antelope Valley College stands out. It is no different, huh? Shame on you. And I say that with a heavy heart. I'm a fan of Antelope Valley College. I am here because of Antelope Valley College. For those of you who know me, I teach deaf studies and sign language on our campus. I have a deaf twin brother. When he was six months old, my parents realized he was deaf, and they made the decision to learn American Sign Language. They came right here to do it. I'm a product of this college through and through. I've graduated here several times, and I, I have the... Was proud to be here, but today I'm not. Please do better.
Okay, thank you both. Um, at this time, I'd like to call on Mr. Jim Temple, who will be presenting our California Community College Chief Information Systems Officer Association Recognition Award.
So, good evening, Dr. Zellet, Board President Gaines, trustees, and guests. My name is Dr. Jim Temple. I am the Vice President of Technology at College of the Canyons. I'm also the immediate past president of the Chief Information Systems Officers Association, or SISWA for short. SISWA is an organization that, for the last forty-plus years, has represented all technology professionals in community colleges throughout the state. Our mission is one of advocacy, support, and ongoing professional development for our members. SISWA takes great pride in acknowledging our members for their outstanding achievements in the field of technology and to recognize those individuals that have declared their intention to retire and who gave their time and talent in service to our system. I am here tonight to honor Mr. Rick Shaw. Rick has spent more than thirty years of his life in the field of technology, twenty-five years of those devoted to higher education. While I'm sure you're familiar with his body of work here at Antelope Valley College, his work in higher education throughout California is equally impressive. As the Chief Technology Officer for Antelope Valley College, Rick has represented your college well as a member of SISWA, volunteering his time to serve on the Library Services Platform Committee, the Scenic Technical Advisory Council, and as a mentor for our SISWA certification program, guiding up-and-coming technology professionals along their career path. As a familiar face at our annual technology summits, Rick has presented on several occasions, imparting his expertise on topics ranging from closed captioning to cloud services and security. Never one to shy away from an opportunity to express his opinion, Rick has played an influential role at the state level, helping to drive statewide priorities, including library services, continued improvements to our internet access for all of our colleges, cyber initiatives, and cloud feasibility studies. Whether working for UC San Francisco, the CSU system, Ventura Community College District, or right here at Antelope Valley College, Rick's commitment to the innovative use of technology in the classroom, equitable access to technology for students, and ensuring the safe and secure administrative operations of the institution he's worked for is an example of the best qualities of a chief technology officer and a model for others in our system to follow. I have had the privilege of working with Rick on numerous occasions over the past ten years. Whether it be collaborating on local projects like enhancing veteran services through the use of technology, emergency notification systems, co-location facilities for our critical systems, or even discussing the future of SISWA in our certification program, Rick has proven time and time again to be an excellent sounding board. Not always telling me what I want to hear, but rather telling me what I needed to hear in order to make informed decisions about the future of our organization. In their nomination of Rick for this award, the individual stated, "Rick has been an outstanding colleague. He has always been willing and able to offer advice and guidance whenever needed. His absence from our system will leave a gap of expertise not easily filled, and I think his contributions to our system warrants recognition." On behalf of the SISWA Board of Directors, in celebration of his upcoming retirement from our system, and in appreciation for his work in SISWA and his numerous contributions to the advancement of technology in higher education, both here at Antelope Valley College and across the state, it is my honor to present Mr. Rick Shaw with the SISWA Board Award, recognizing his decades of service and countless contributions to SISWA in the California Community College system.
Okay, move on to a presentation of our food services operations. Sis, you have a copy in front of you.
Good evening. My name is James Nasbuck, Director of Bar and Cilery Services. Wanted to bring you up to date on our food service operations here at Antelope Valley College. See if this... Working earlier. Okay. If somebody could just go to the next slide for me. There we go. These are the topics I just want to go over, our goals, what we're currently doing, our in-house food service, in-house food service, staffing, financials, and then our next steps. One of the top things that we want to do as a college, as a community college, is to provide high-quality food and ser- and services at reasonable prices. That's our number one thing for the students, for the staff, for the administrators. We also look at, how do we provide information as far as healthy food options, different ways to educate customers and how to eat healthy? And then finally, how do we become an employer of students as well? That's also something that we look to as goals for, for food service. Currently, we have a very limited food service options. We have Subway, which is located in New Hacey Hall. We currently have food trucks that are in the library quad daily. We also have grab-and-go options that are found in the Marauder Bookstore, which is currently operated by Barnes &amp; Noble, and currently catered events are done through third-party vendors with, from auxiliary services. We're looking to start this small, but to grow from there. We're working towards, right now, an opening in February. That is our goal. Just want to make sure that is a goal that we have. Our planned hours of operation are being a little bit more limited. We're looking at Monday through Thursday, nine to five, and then Friday is nine to twelve. We're going to continue to have catering done with outside vendors, just from a standpoint. And it wouldn't be fair right now to change that either, as that's become the norm right now. From a staffing standpoint, we are looking at, we would have to require at least two to three full-time positions to actually operate this. You're looking at a supervisor in food services and two food service assistants, two positions. We'd also look to benefit from hiring temps to help out, as well as hourly personnel as, and student staff as well. So those are all the staffing pieces. From a financial standpoint, I just want to kind of go back in between 2015 and 2018, prior to being out of Source, we actually had losses between one hundred and $200,000. We worked with outside vendors. We had one pre-pandemic, and then we mutually went away from that, just because we were in the pandemic. We didn't know when we were going to kind of come back up. When we did put it out for bid, they did not bid, again, just from a financial standpoint. They could not see operating the cafeteria as something economically feasible with them. That happened with our last as well. Operating losses would need to be funded from unrestricted general fund and could exceed possibly what we had lost in, between 2015 and 2018. But I do want to let you know, we have heard the feedback from SIS. We've heard the feedback from the board that this is something that they're in favor of bringing back. I just want to put out realistic, this is what we're also looking at from a financial standpoint, as far as what it means to operate a cafeteria here at ABC. So our next steps, the first one is staffing, which is a lot of what could possibly put us behind. I'm not going to say it is, but we have to hire people, make sure we get the right people in those positions. We're looking at various different options. We are working with HR right now to speed up that process as well. We also are looking at permits, having to go back through the health permit, business permit, franchise board tax permit, all those things that were in 2018 were eliminated. We also have to look at a point-of-sale system. When you look at a point-of-sale, it might be easy to say square, but when we look at, we're looking at to bring EBT on campus. We're not sure if Square wants to do it, or can have that function, but that's something we're investigating. Also, when you look at the plan for bringing, I know it's five, six, seven years down the road, but bringing on-campus housing on, now we're looking at, are we looking at meal plans? So can a PO system actually do that? So these are all little pieces that we're looking at. We're looking to see what we need right now. We've already went back and are establishing our vendors with US Foods, who we've been with prior, and Pepsi, who we're currently working with. And then we're working through menu creation for the cafeteria. What is that going to look like from a small starting standpoint? And then working our way and growing in that. So that's our current plan for food service operations, where we're at now, where we've been, and where we're looking to go. Have any questions as a board? I presume you would.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Comment. Sometimes the staff and faculty, students think the board doesn't listen. We listen. And I remember one of the students mentioned about the cafeteria, and I brought it up before the board and the president, and the president's heard from students too. We have heard what students, faculty, and staff want. That's why this is happening. I have one question though. Once the cafeteria opens, will the food trucks go away?
That is something we're going to look at, maybe bringing back on a, you know, a special time every once in a while. We've developed relationships with them. We are continuing with master agreements, so if people want it for special events, use them as well. So they won't probably be as full force as we are now, but just for special times. And that's, that is an option.
Thank you for what you're doing, and thanks for the administration and President Zellet for doing this. We appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Yeah, Mr. Nasapac?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I have just a couple of questions. Did I hear you say that on Fridays at like noon, the, the service would be stopped for, for the students, and there would be, I mean, I assume that there will be no service for the kids who take Saturday classes?
That is correct, and that's how it's been in the past as well. Subway in the past has been open, but again, as we're looking at new economic models, you know, as far as what they can stay open with, it's not outside of what we would look at. I'm just letting you know what we have done in the past and how we can follow those times as well.
Um, and I'm, I'm sure maybe you've heard about this, but I, but I feel like it's an opportunity that I need to share an experience that was brought to my attention. There was a Saturday class this past semester that was about five hours, and I may be off a little bit, five hours and forty-five minutes long or fifteen minutes long on Saturday morning. And, and I, and it was in our, our new building, one of our new buildings. And I received weekly updates on the conditions of the machines, to the point where the students in that class were resorting to putting a little signs on there. So my, my question is not laying blame to you, sir, but if, for example, Pepsi, I think you mentioned Pepsi, I don't know Pepsi, Coke, whichever one, is our service provider for that machine, how often are they coming by? Because I literally have pictures on my phone, sir, where that machine was so empty, the kids couldn't, or that it would take their money and nothing would fall down on the snack machine, like they would send me, "This week, the snack machine's working, but the Pepsi machine's not working." We need to do a better job for our kids who are, who are here on a Saturday morning or Friday, whatever morning, and maybe they went out the door without breakfast, and that chip or that cookie might just tide them over for that five hours. And I think if we're really focusing on doing what's best for students, shame on us, that we can't even keep our vending machines filled for the kids who might be here on a Saturday or late Friday evening, or any evening for that matter.
Yes, ma'am, and I remember that whole scenario of time, and we worked with Pepsi, and I, we're in the process, I know that this is past due, but we did get it running, and they have put together a new plan to put new machines on campus from that standpoint and get ones that are malfunctioning. So I know it was a very difficult time during that, that month and a half, I believe it was, that it seemed like every week there was something, and we, I was trying to do, unfortunately, probably not to the best that you saw, but we were really trying our best to get, make sure they had something. I believe at one time we did put out, I know it was little, but we did put out free water just so that they had something for a weekend, you know, in case the machines were down and stuff like that. But I did hear that we tried to move forward as fast as we could.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
And if, if I may add to the board, thank you, Mr. Nasapac, for all you're doing, and thank you for this presentation. We wanted to begin with our operational hours, and as we expand and grow into our services, especially taking into account the potential of our, our student housing, we'll be looking at all of the ways that we can make these kinds of services available to our students and the faculty and staff who are, are working with our students at those odd hours. So we're looking to grow, and we'll definitely be keeping you apprised of how those, those hours and services change.
I have a, I'm sorry, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious, so we're in, so you said it was in debt a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand annually when we had it?
Correct.
Have we figured out the source of that loss?
Yes, it was the, the amount of sales that would go through there. So when you look at, when you look at salary and benefits and what's needed to operate that, and our current guidelines that we have to be in as far as what we pay employees and things like that, you, the amount that you have to actually sell is sometimes difficult. If I can give you one quick example, when you hit, on a four-year school, you have a meal plan, and you already know what that, your financials are, because you actually have that money in the bank. When you're running a community college like how we are, it's the same as Subway. We're running a retail operation, so it's kind of hard to gauge from that standpoint. Our goal is to be able to break even, that, twenty years outside of, of college, college and university work was in the private sector and business, so I understand that. But it's just, hopefully, we can get those sales up, and that's really, and one of the big pieces that we talk about is affordability. Well, there's a, this line you have to go between affordability and what sale price should be, so then we don't have negative numbers when we look at our balance sheet and things like that. Hopefully, that answered your question? Yeah, thank you.
Just as a quick add-on to that, the college is committed to ensuring that these, these services are offered to everyone, and so the VP of Finance and the executive cabinet, we've been talking about ways that we know as we move forward, we're baking into the budget funds to support that, and there are funds outside of the general funds that can be allocated to cover that, and so not all of it has to come from our unrestricted general fund. So we're moving forward with the awareness, and, and Mr. Nasapac is correct, we would love to run as close to break even as possible, but whether we do or not, we're committed to providing this service to our students, faculty, and staff.
If I can add something, Dr. Zellet, real quick? Yeah, we've already talked to some of like, those funds that are out there that do provide food vouchers within our community, and how do we have that become a part of the program to be able to? I don't want to use the word subsidize, but to provide maybe some places to help us financially. So those are all aspects that we're looking at to make this the best product, best service for students, and be still fiscally responsible to the district and college. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we have nothing to report out of closed session at this time. However, the board will be returning to closed session later this evening, so just let you know that. Board members, with regard to the consent agenda, I'd like you to focus on 14.3 before we vote, the appointment of administrators, faculty, and classified personnel. This is regarding Mr. Van Rider, who has been made a dean. His compensation will be on the admin salary schedule, column two, step one. Any questions regarding 14.3 before we vote? Okay, yes. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Move approval. Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda passes. Okay, action items, 15.1, approval of resolution 22-23-8, delegation of authority to the president, superintendent to contract for marketing services. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. Yes, Madam President. I, I believe that we are giving authority to the president superintendent to contract, but any finances involved in this will have to be approved by the board. Am I?
This is an approval to go out for bids and all of the financial pieces will be included in that and any financial expenditures related to this would be approved by the board. Correct?
Thank you.
Okay, so advice? All those in favor? Oppose? Motion passes. Fifteen point two, approval of resolution twenty-two dash twenty-three ten, twenty twenty-three housing construction grant. Do I have a motion? Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. Yes. Telephone book is the grant application. I've been reading it for days and still haven't gone through it. I, I personally have some reservations about this. After reading this document, we're, first of all, we're not certain who's going to operate the student housing, the college or outside operator. We're going to partner with, we partner with the city of Lancaster and provide student housing in the houses that the city has. And we also have contracts with Oxford Inn and Marriott on J eight to provide emergency services to students that need housing. And I would like to know how many students right now are desperate and we have to provide housing for before we put up a structure for five hundred people. Also, the cost to run the housing. This telephone book says, you know, we're, we're going to be close to eating. We don't know. But we've never run housing before. I understand you have to be a full-time student to stay in this housing. So twenty-six percent of our Fall students in two thousand twenty-two So, I mean, seventy-five percent of students can't use it. That's what I understand. And it says in this phone book, land was acquired to provide housing. No, we acquired the land where we could have future expansion of the college. I don't recall, we were focused on student housing when we acquired it. I have reservations with this. I don't think that this should be, we have a deadline, twenty-fifth of January, to approve this and get it to the chancellor's office. I think that we need to have a special meeting and talk about this. You can't, this is, look at this. How many people have read it, even looked at it? No, we need to talk about it and then we have plenty of time to get it to Sacramento if that's the case. So I'm voting no. Thank you.
To address some of your questions, sir, there are three hundred beds in the structure for students. And the idea is to incentivize some of those seventy-five percent who are not yet full-time to participate in the student housing and thereby become full-time students. The criteria for the housing, it, it's meant to help our students who can't afford rent, but it's not restricted to our students who are part of this emergency aid program. And so while it might be a good litmus test to know exactly how many students we're putting into the Oxford Suites and some of those other emergency houses, I would also invite us to think more expansively about what our student housing opportunity can do. Within the residence halls, they're, they're constructed in neighborhoods that provide a sense of community and unity. There's opportunities and spaces for tutoring to be present in those halls. There's also community kitchens where they can again, create more community and a sense of belonging, all of which are factors in students persisting and succeeding in their college education. And so while at the root of it, it's housing, it's, it's bigger than that. It's about providing a way for students who can't afford, even if they're not yet part of that emergency critical population, it's a way for them to be able to afford to be part of the campus concern. And while the property behind the college was not acquired, maybe necessarily specifically for student housing, I would suggest that student housing is part of campus expansion and it is part of allowing students to come to Antelope Valley full-time and maybe not have to work and be employed so much so that they could get through a two-year degree in two years. That would be our goal. So I understand that you have some concerns, but I would also encourage us to take very seriously the chancellor's office deadline. There are many people, many colleges competing for these funds and this would be a huge asset to the college. So I hope that addresses some of your concerns.
Madam President, I, I know that we could call a special board meeting before the twenty-fifth. After we've had a extensive review of this by all boardmen, this is sixty million dollars we're talking about, sixty million dollars in my hand. And we haven't gone through the whole thing. We need to have a special meeting on this. And we can convene by Zoom, whatever, and have the meeting and okay, plenty of time to get to Sacramento.
Any other discussion?
Just for the board's information, there would need to be consensus and that could be taken right now if the board wants to have a special board meeting or if the board wants to go for a vote. And that's your privilege to discuss and come to consensus now.
Anyone else? Okay. Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Nay.
Motion passes. Fifteen point three, consideration of California Community College trustees, CCCT board election of twenty twenty-three.
This is about nominating someone from our board. So if someone wants to be nominated.
Well, I would like to be nominated. I nominate myself.
I will nominate.
Thank you.
Anyone else interested in being nominated? Currently, there are two openings. Okay. All right, so. Okay, so we have Mr. Michael Reeves. We have a first and second on him being nominated to the CCCT board. Any discussion? Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Michael, your name will be.
Thank you. Thank you.
And there will be some work that you'll have to do, I can tell you. So be prepared. Okay. Approval of Citizens Bond Oversight Committee for Measure AB Membership Appointment. Do I have a motion? Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. I contacted legal counsel for the board and I had some questions about makeup of this Oversight Committee. Did the legal counsel have a chance to examine?
So as I replied to your question earlier today, this list is not exhaustive. The entire composition of the board is not at, at large with just a couple of other people. We are currently searching to fill two vacancies, one for a senior citizen representative and one for a business community representative. You can anticipate that those positions will be on the board next month, on the agenda next month.
So we do have the different classifications stipulated to be on the board. We do have those different, they needed somebody from a foundation, senior citizens, so forth. We meet all those qualifications and also we have the at-large. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Advice? All those in favor?
Aye.
President Gaines?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to ask that those who are speaking into the mics speak up. It has been a bit difficult to hear over Zoom and I am concerned about those with auditory challenges and the interpreter being able to make sure that she gets everything in. So if we could, I know it's a larger room, if we could all just speak up a bit, I think it would.
Thank you. All right, action item fifteen point five, approval of sabbatical leave for Ray Agahari for one semester beginning fall of twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Fifteen point six, approval of agreement with Purple Pass for ticket sales for events held in the Performing Arts Theater. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Fifteen point seven, approval to extend agreement for vision services for students with Wallace Family Eye Care through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Fifteen point eight, approval of agreement between Shabbat Las Rositas Community College and Antelope Valley Community College for the California Early Childhood Mentor Program from July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I believe that should, that final date should be June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Apologies for the typo.
So we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Fifteen point nine, approval of the affiliation agreement between Antelope Valley College and American Medical Response AMR through January of twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
Shall move. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. This and the next one have to do with ambulance services. Is this an internship for our students?
It's to help, we have EMT programs both here at this campus and also over at the Palmdale Center. And those students do ride-alongs and this is partly with that and potentially also with our athletics. I need to read through it a little more detailed, but primarily with our EMT program.
Are, are they compensating?
The students? It's part of their program to do internships, kind of like how our nursing students go through and do clinicals. It's part of their education process, not something that they receive compensation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Fifteen point ten, approval of affiliation agreement with Antelope Valley College and All-Town Ambulance for Antelope Valley College EMT Program through November twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Fifteen point eleven, approval of Hispanic-serving institutions Title V Grant, a serving-minded math and computational science pathway. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Fifteen point twelve, approval to reject the award bid, ABC twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three dash one for Gymnasium Renovation Project number seventeen dash oh oh two. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Fifteen point thirteen, approval of resolution twenty-two dash twenty-three nine, delegation of authority to the president superintendent to contract for Performing Arts Theater Refresh with HERF funds. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Fifteen point fourteen, approval of renewal of agreement with Ready Education Incorporated for a mobile platform as part of COVID tracking and tracing with HERF funds. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Fifteen point fifteen, approval of project assignment amendment PAA for Construction Management Services with Fonder Salari Incorporated for Air Handler Units Replacement Student Center and New Data Fiber to Learning Center Project number twenty-two, twenty-three, excuse me, dash zero one nine with HERF funds and California Community College COVID nineteen Recovery Block Grant. Do I have a motion?
Shall move. Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Fifteen point sixteen, approval to purchase computers for Palmdale Center with HERF funds. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Fifteen point seventeen, approval to utilize the Foundation for California Community Colleges Master Agreement with Terrain US Incorporated for the purchase of HVAC products, labor, and services with HERF funds. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Fifteen point eighteen, approval to utilize Highland Software Incorporated Cooperative Agreement for a contract management solution with HERF and unrestricted funds. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Fifteen point nineteen, approval of insurance program coverage proposal in statewide educational wrap-up program for the rooftop air handling unit replacements, FA one, FA two, FA three, FA four with HERF funds. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Fifteen point twenty, approval of insurance program coverage in statewide educational wrap-up program for the Marauder Complex Project number seventeen dash zero four one with Measure AB funds. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Passes. Fifteen point twenty-one, approval to ratify contract with Red Hawk Services Incorporated for the fencing at North and South Soccer Fields Marauder Complex, informal bid number ABC twenty twenty-two dash oh six with Measure AB funds. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. Why are we putting up the fences at this time? Uh, yes, Madam President. Why are we putting up the fences at this time?
Mr. Benidetti will help us with that one.
Because they were taken down during the first phase of the Marauder Complex. Uh, they were dissolved out of MVC's contract, and I was allowed to then do it using the funds that were left in their contract.
One question. When are we gonna finish that North Field?
That's what this fence is for, so that I can start getting that finished and get it graded.
Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Hey. Senate, Senate, Academy Senate, Camira, Colmedo, Distain.
Good evening. All right, so the Academic Senate President Van Rider has accepted a position. You just voted on it. Um, as the interim Dean of Strong Workforce Community Engagement in Palmdale effective immediately. The Academic Senate Executive Team, myself, Dr. McGovern, and Brian Pelagalo will distribute the President's duties among ourselves until we hire, or hire we wish, right? Until we elect a new Academic Senate President, we'll be holding elections in February. Um, all academic subcommittee chairs will stay in place during the transition. Uh, some of the topics that the Senate will be addressing this term, D E T C and accessibility. Um, all Canvas courses are going to be subject to accessibility audits. So we need to promote accessibility training, at-one training, that kind of stuff. Um, we're going to continue to keep highlighting IDEA. Um, and we are going to be creating a task force to look at the Academic Senate Constitution and bylaws and have this task force try to give us some recommendations for updates. That's all I've got for now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Antelope Valley College Federation of Teachers, Dr. Jason.
Good evening. Welcome back. Hope you're staying dry. Happy New Year. Uh, the Federation Faculty Union is looking forward to completing a successor agreement before the end of spring, so we're excited, uh, to see if we can meet that goal. Uh, there are a lot of challenges the college is facing. There's successes, of course, to speak of. And what I find myself doing, you know, when I'm overwhelmed with responsibility and so on and, you know, being made aware of the work that needs to be done is, I look forward to seeing the students. So tomorrow, uh, I don't have classes Monday. I don't know if I should be excited about that or not, but but tomorrow I get to see my students for the first time, and, and, and that is what I've been looking forward to all month. So anyway, uh, welcome back. I hope everyone has a great, uh, January. Thank you.
Thank you. Antelope Valley College Federation of Classified and.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome back to the new year. Um, Classified in the Student Services Building are look- looking forward to moving into the new building. We're all packed up and ready to go. Um, we're very pleased to see that the cafeteria will be returning for the students. It's always been a huge part of the campus and a gathering place for them to feel connected, and it just, I think it's going to be a, a positive thing. Um, currently, uh, the district and the Federation's legal counsel are working on the compliance for the PERB, and it's nearing compliance, from what I hear, is nearing its completion, its end, which means I can have my middle name back instead of PERB. And, um, so I'm very appreciative of the work that's being done, and I hope that the momentum will continue so that we can put this behind us. And also, um, Classified are looking forward to getting back into negotiations and having that settled. So thank you and good evening.
Confidential Management Supervisory Administrator Employees, Shell Hernandez.
Good evening and happy new year from the CMSA group. Um, just want to welcome everybody back to the spring semester. We have, um, Welcome Week that's going on this week, and we, um, had over two hundred students come to our, um, to our Welcome Week event, um, today in the Lancaster, um, Student Lounge. And so they stayed dry there, got some school supplies and some snacks. Um, so I just wanted to thank the managers for allowing our volunteers to come out, because we did have volunteers who were out, um, doing mobile greeting, greeting students in the rain and letting them know where they need to go, um, as well as assisting them in the student lounge. So, um, all managers are, are back at it and, and hard at work, and so we just wanted to say happy new year and have a great semester.
You? Associated Student Organization, Diana Ferrasoli.
Good evening, everyone. Um, for ASO, our update is that this week we will be, um, assisting with Welcome Week, and we'll be handing out some school supplies to students. And then, um, January the seventeenth through the nineteenth, we'll be hosting, um, Club Rush. Thank you.
Uh, Antelope Valley College Foundation, Diane. Not here this evening. Okay. Office of the Superintendent President, Dr. Zalad.
Thank you, President Gaines. Um, we've had an irregular situation that I would like to take a moment and acknowledge. Uh, in our open comments at the beginning, it's come to our attention that people who were on YouTube were unable to hear the comments. And, uh, we want to support freedom of speech and expression, and we want to allow employees and anyone who, and the public who has a public comment to be heard. And so, uh, with the board's permission, um, I would like to propose that we invite back to the microphone, um, Ms. Rochelle Hightower, and I'm sorry, I don't have the card in front of me anymore, our, our faculty. If he, Mr. Kalt, if he's still here, we would like to invite you both back to come and repeat your comments so that people who are watching on YouTube can hear you, if you would like to take the time.
Ms. Hightower, also, um, the last time you were up, you went a little bit over, so if we can keep your comments to three minutes.
I think with the exception, I think we'll be all right.
Sorry?
I think with the exception and what's happened, we will be okay, but I'll be brief.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Cole.
Actually, um, she doesn't have time to yield. Each speaker gets three minutes.
I'm Rochelle Hightower, Director of Student Equity and Emotion Coordinator here at Antelope Valley College. On the eve of the birth of Dr. Martin Luther King, in a time that we set aside to celebrate him and the work that he did um, in this nation, I'm sad to say that ABC is far off from equality, equity, and justice. There's been numerous policy procedures and professional violations and undermining of me directly and my department as a whole. I have asked to be placed on paid administrative leave while investigations happen. I have been subjected to a hostile work environment on this campus and have gone through every process to try to resolve it at the lowest level, only to be further subjected to retaliation, my health and livelihood placed in danger. I filed a whistleblower complaint only to have local, state, and federal whistleblower protection acts violated and bear- and my complaint buried. I've been called colored on this campus. I've had my team members called the black one by a member of management, and that member of management be instructed to write an apology, and that implo- that apology be written on a post-it, and not to everyone in the room that was offended. The week before break, this past winter break, my dean stated to me about a very disruptive move of our office space and for students of, uh, spaces for students of color, that we, we're the only ones who seem to have no home on campus. She stated that she had told management, how many masters do they need? Not bosses, masters, insinuating that I and my staff are slaves. When I attempted to report this, I received no response from her supervisor, VP, after, until after I wrote the fifth email calling out their avoidance of my complaint. In one of the responses to my statements was, the VP said, "So the source of your complaint is a singular use of one word in a conversation, suggesting that the frequency of calling, me, calling me and my staff slaves one time wasn't one time too many." I've had HR try to block me from filing, from telling my truths and the, this truth and others to the board in closed session, and attempts to block me from filing a whistleblower complaint under AP and BP seventy-seven-hundred as allowed because the president is named. They believed that they needed to screen my words to see if they were worthy to be heard of elected officials. They were sworn by oath to uphold the law and maintain public trust, like you couldn't make a decision for yourself to hear a whistleblower complaint. I've written emails asking to be heard about whistleblower complaints to you, Madam President, about racism, discrimination, white supremacy, anti-blackness, retaliation, and oppression, and I haven't received no response. I request that I be paid on, put on admin-paid leave and to protect me from the hostile work environment that continues to happen. And I close with these remarks. I'm not interested in picking up the crumbs of compassion thrown from the table of someone who considers themselves my master. I want the full rights, a full menu of rights, Desmond Tutu. Justice will not be served unto those who are affect- unaffected or as outraged as those who are. If you're neutral in situations of justice, you've, you've sided with the oppressor. Never forget that justice is what love looks like in public, and without justice, there can be no love.
Good evening, trustees and student trustee. Happy New Year and welcome to spring twenty-twenty-three semester. Today was the first day of classes for spring, and we're excited for what this semester brings to us all. I would like to share with you some updates. First of all, our enrollment update. Um, we have a goal of eleven thousand four hundred students, eleven-four by twenty-twenty-four. That's our slogan. And we're making great inroads and increasing our enrollments. Now the focus is on both having existing students take more units and honing in on student retention and success. You will notice from, uh, the boards, and this is going to be posted with the minutes, you'll all be able to see the screenshot below of our data. Um, you'll notice from the screenshot below that as of today, we have eleven thousand two hundred and ten unduplicated students. This is a hundred and three more than spring twenty-twenty-one, almost a thousand more from last and three thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight FTES, up a hundred and forty-nine from spring twenty-twenty-one and four hundred and eighty from last spring. I wish the drum corps were here for this, because this is a good thing. FTES this spring are a hundred and fourteen percent of last spring's tally as of today. Y'all should be applauding yourselves for this great work. Many thanks to everyone on campus who's working hard to achieve our eleven-four by twenty-twenty-four goal. This is great news for our students. Campus transitions. Facilities has been working closely with Dr. Rivera and the entire Student Services Team to pack up the old Student Services Building to facilitate the move to our new Student Services Building. Some of our services will be moving to the old Learning Center, and I look forward to the day when we don't preface any building with old and new when everyone has their name, um, with, and the Student Services Team is working on renaming that space. Anyone needing to find the Dreamer Center, first-year experience, second-year expansion, experience, Qunte, Umoja, will find those services in that space. Fencing will soon be coming up around the old Student Serv- Student Services Building, and demolition will, will begin to facilitate the building of our new instructional space, Cedar Hall. Spring goals and activities. I want to discuss with the campus, and I've begun some of this discussion, um, but I want the board to be aware we're talking about some decision-making principles. I'll be taking this draft of ABC decision-making principles to the various constituent groups this month to gain input and consensus. These simple principles will help us make unified decisions for students, employees, and the community. And the draft is, uh, consists of these three principles. One, do what is best for students. Two, find a way to yes, even if the yes doesn't look like what the requister first had in mind. Three, promote and maintain the highest standards and ethics in all that we do. We're going to be talking about these in all of our decision-making groups, and everyone will have a chance to offer suggestions and amend and improve, and then as a campus community, we'll move forward with these tools to provide us some, uh, uniformity. Two, addition of class times to the block schedule. Our current block schedule has six class periods in one day during the day with, uh, an hour break at a pivotal teaching time. So right now, our current class schedule has an empty spot, an hour break at eleven a.m. Nothing happens on the campus except for people doing whatever they need to do, but not teaching. So, um, I will be sharing with the campus a proposal that we first rolled out and talked about at Schedule Palooza, and, and that's a silly name for a deep dive into strategic intensive scheduling practices. Present at that meeting were faculty department chairs, there were academic senate representatives, there were also, uh, deans and, and academic affairs staff. At Schedule Palooza, we talked about implementing, uh, adding two class periods with, uh, to the day and starting at six-thirty in the morning and then scheduling the block down throughout. And really, all that does is it creates the ability to offer a full gen ed pattern in the morning. There'll be four class periods in the morning, four class periods in the afternoon, and it will, it will help facilitate student demands during those times. It will maximize our building utilization. It will minimize class conflicts and scheduling that force our students to postpone completion as they await courses. Um, it will increase the capacity of our schedule to grow to our desired FTES goals. While this is an addition of time slots, and I appreciate, I took a lot of Jason's time over, over last Friday, and we had really good conversation. I appreciate that, um, this is an addition of time slot. There is not an infringement upon current working conditions, and it is compliance with the contract. In consultation with Dr. Bowen regarding the faculty participation, we agree that this kind of operational decision is in, is within the purview of the president to implement. Having said that, I'm interested in this launch being very successful and full of possibility. So I will hold a scheduling forum this week for any interested parties to participate in, not just faculty, but classified professionals as well. And I'm sure that, uh, when we go through this presentation, then we'll have opportunity to answer any questions and gain input. Um, I also will be attending the, uh, Faculty, uh, Union Meeting this week to speak with exec about this. From my point of view, and I've tried to give it a three-sixty and look at this, it, it's beneficial all the way around. It offers more opportunity for, uh, students. It offers for, if, if we have anyone out there who's a morning person like me, I was up at four this morning doing some work, then you can start teaching at six-thirty in the morning. There's just more opportunities. So our current practices about assigning classes and all of those things will be followed. So let's meet, let's talk, and let's, let's prototype this and see how it works. There are other continued efforts, for example, Guided Pathways, Carrying Campus, Student Housing Grant, Progress, Achieving the Dream, and all of this work is aimed at promoting student success and completion. I'm proud of the work of Antelope Valley College, and I look forward to continuing to improve our practices so that this college makes the most of every opportunity to su- serve students and be kind. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zalad. Okay, board member comments. Mr. Barnes?
Thank you. All right, everybody. All right, so, yeah, welcome back, everybody. So I'm also thankful to be here serving our students and working collabora- collaboratively with faculty, staff, and administrators to get the job done. There is not one department here at this college that has not went above and beyond my concerns or my needs. So as I focus on all the policies that directly affects, uh, students, this semester I will be narrowing in on advocating for student, for our student bodies' non-plus-one rights. This effort will create a compelling culture of leadership here and encourage more students to get involved in leadership roles. I'm also proud to work with, uh, ASO, and I'm proud of the work they have been accomplishing and what they, they're gonna accomplish moving forward over these next several months. As we prepare for Welcome Week, which already got started, I know that with their support, we will and we can build a legacy of strong student engagement and leadership. Thank you.
Mr. Buffalo?
It's interesting being in here, isn't it? It's a little bit different from the old board meeting. One of my immediate observations, it's a shorter walk, Mike, for a lot of you. So worked out well. I'm sure we'll get the bugs out and it'll get better even. Thank you.
Mr. Reeves?
I want to welcome everyone back, and I want us to remember that our primary goal here is education. It's not housing, it's not food, it's to educate and to help people achieve their dreams. Community college is a way to achieve dreams. And for the next two years that I'm on the board, that will be my focus to help students and their parents achieve their dreams. Thank you.
Mr. Adams?
I report, Ms. Harvey.
Ms. Harvey?
Okay, I just want to say that I personally want to thank the entire team who worked diligently to write that comprehensive housing grant. As someone who has written a grant or two in my career, I know how difficult and it takes a lot of time and a lot of focus, and there's rewrites, and there's a lot to be taken into consideration, especially when you're applying for a $60 million grant. So I just want to say to the team from the Antelope Valley College, I wish I knew everyone who worked on that and Dr. Zalat. Regardless of the outcome, kudos to each and every one of you because it's a great effort on our part to meet this deadline. And I just want to say I'm very honored that we can submit by the deadline for this grant. And I just want to say, welcome back. I kind of like being up here, although I have these new glasses and they're progressives. And I'm like, I can't find that sweet spot yet where I can see far and close, so bear with me a little bit. And I have to find it soon because I have to take my written, I have to take the vision test at the DMV very soon. So I went there to try to memorize the charts, but that's not going to work. So I'm going to have to find that sweet spot. So welcome back, everybody. And we will be returning to closed session. Not sure how long we'll be in there. Hopefully not too long if you want to stick around. Thank you.
There will be a report out. We'll return back here. As she said, we don't know, we can't give you a time determination, but we will be returning for the report.
You know, this is just really bad. It's just really, really bad. This second hand is all too much.
Ms. Harvey, your mic is on. We can hear you.
Hello?
Just letting you know that your mic was on. We could hear you.
Oh, I'm glad you're here. Good. Are you expecting me back in closed?
This is just the interpreter. I was just letting you know that your mic was on. I'm not sure.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right, we will reconvene to public session at 9:11. We have nothing to report out of closed session at this time. Our next meeting will be Monday, February the 13th. And before we adjourn the meeting, I'd like to be on behalf of the Board of Trustees, wish Ms. Pamela Ford a happy birthday a few hours early. So happy birthday Pam. We will adjourn the meeting at 9:11.
Thank you all.
Thank you.